I'd like to welcome everybody to the October Bonnob City Council meeting. We've got a full agenda tonight, so let's get started. Three minutes.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
To the committee reports, ambulance, Mr. Hodges.
I have nothing.
I know they've made several calls. Nothing out of order, probably. He would have let us know. Bar Committee?
I have a couple items here Danny shared with me. September fire report, they made 12 runs. And part of one of the guys was at school this week with a firehouse. And he's requesting be allowed to buy two cutoff sales, like cut metal buildings and things that get in their way. They have two old ones you want to replace. Both of them. And he's got a price on them from Gary. They're still a model PF420. And on state contract price, they're $900 each. So I move if we allow him to take $1,800 in his county fire tax fund to pay for the cost.
Second.
Who seconded that? What was the model PF420?
TS420.
TS420.
TTS?
Tom Sam.
420?
Yes, $900 each.
From, is that Act 833 or your other money?
The county fire.
County tax.
Also, he's got a truck, a later truck.
All those in favor, that's unanimous.
He's had his latter truck serviced and checked. He's having some fuel pressure troubles with it. And Marty has determined that his pump, he needs to be allowed to spend $1,283.62 to get it repaired. So I so moved.
Who seconded? All those in favor, unanimous.
Wait to get ready. A lot of concern. I had a call about every week about some property that we called the thicket on Elm Street, South Elm. And we've arranged to finally get in touch with the owner, the Betty Rogers Estate. And they have, they're going to pay the, not Crenshaw's, but Crenshaw's, found somebody else, the Horton Brothers, to clean it up for us Wednesday. And why I bring it up now, the fire department will kind of just oversee the burning of it, you know, next week. We'll clean it up next week, Wednesday, and then five days later, everything's supposed to burn a little easier, you know, we let it sit and build the gas up. So we'll try to burn it the next Monday. So no shingles, no whatever. And I want everybody, when I bring this up, I want everybody to realize that if a property owner is, just state regulations, if you're 500 feet from your neighbor and have all of your neighbor's approval, you can actually clean, you know, tear your house down if it doesn't have any shingles on it. This does not have a house. They're not going to tear the house down there. We're going to leave it. But all the brush and limbs, it's really going to be a nice place when they get done with it and it'll be ready to probably move, they'll get a permit to move a trailer in. So it'll be a nice trailer. She'll move some of her family in there. And I just want the people, everybody to realize, the city's not against manufactured housing. I want everybody to realize that. And our planning commission is going to discuss some new regulations that have come about when we meet tomorrow night. So just want everybody to know what's going on and we'll give update on some of the other stuff later, but this one was regarding burning, that's why I brought it up.
General Fund, beginning bank balance of mid in 112, 838, receipts of $154,987, dispersment of $146,168, ending bank balance of mid in 121, 658. Street Fund, we had $165,394, receipts of $18,436, dispersment of $20,944, ending bank
That's all?
That's it.
And deal. Planning Commission, Mr. Myers, we'd like to speak first.
Well, I have my job. I'd like to see myself paid for. I do more for work than I do at home. It's only a point, but I got that.
Okay, would you? Are you asking for your phone service to be paid for?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify. I didn't think everybody heard what you said. How does council people about that?
$25. I beg your pardon.
Pay it.
I don't want to have to.
Right. We do need to get him full time.
I think what I'm trying to say is, I don't want everybody to sell phones next month. We're all using our phones.
Now, other employees do have it already. I mean, he doesn't, but other employees do.
Would you?
Andy does, Willie Mack does, and the animal, yeah, control officer does. 60 plus taxes, $61.01. I don't know how much Andy says, but I'm thinking that the animal control officer is almost what you are. Okay, hers is 30. Council just voted to give them a phone and/or pay for their phone. Actually, what we do is buy them a phone and then renew it every month.
David, do you have a problem with going ahead and approving the checks and then reviewing everybody like you're talking about? Sounds like he's saving us money at $25 versus the others, you know?
I think it does need to be addressed.
There's no question about that. Chuck, would you have a problem? Wait a minute. All right, thank you very much. Thanks for bringing that up because it's been an issue that did need to be brought up.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Guys, we need to do that personnel policy. Things like this is what bites us. We inherited some of this from past, so let's review those personnel policies and let's try to get it in effect by the first of the year. You went through yours and you're ready to sign off on it or you ask questions?
No.
No.
There's a lot of things that need to be addressed that are on there. But the phone, the phone thing, I don't think anybody has a question. I'd like to be able to get ahold of my department heads and I, you know, I call you all the time. And I want to make sure that the city, if the city's paying for some of them, I'd like to see them pay for all the department heads, you know? But other than that, I'm open to wait for when we can have a discussion on it, you know? So.
How about we set it for, what is it, the fourth Monday?
Anything that y'all said is good with me.
Fourth Monday, 6:00. Y'all might have to call me.
Martha, I think you should visit with the auditor tomorrow.
Okay.
About the policy.
About the phone? Okay.
Yeah.
She's about to wind it up, isn't she?
She, maybe, Monday or Thursday or Wednesday or Thursday, she'll be done.
So I'll check with her tomorrow, like I said. There's some things that will, you know, I've got on my mind that will address at this meeting. So during the planning commission, let's see, Mary Lou Smith, you're already on the new business, you just want to wait to speak, planning commission at that time, is that okay with you? Or you want to talk about it?
I have to chat.
Okay. You're exactly right. And we're going to learn a lesson on this right here. Chuck, we need to get, you and I do, we need to really get on that first thing in the morning. I got a call from the tax assessor's office today, and I'm glad you brought that up because she put me on speaker with Mr. Suarez. This is, I don't mind bringing his name up because it's public knowledge here, because we've spoken about it before. But he was at the tax collector's office, he has been working in Texas. His brother evidently has been getting his mail and signing for it, certified mail. One time?
One time.
Okay. And.
That's all they did?
Well, yeah, but they took, they got the notice, though. They didn't respond, but he did bring us one check for some money, right?
And that was for this year.
Yeah, but he's had some sense then, correct? And that's.
He's had something before then.
But he didn't. Yeah, that's what he's saying. But anyway, I told him that they were all valid and need to pay them if he's going to get his taxes paid for. Then I started talking to him about the house and wasn't listed yet. So we've got to come up with a way that when we, this is our procedure is what I'm getting at. I want everybody to realize this, our procedure is lacking on how efficient that we get these liens filed. Like when we approved the resolution, you know, to tear them down, or it's ordinance to tear them down, isn't it? That we need to have a process that we go and file that lien, you know, as soon as that work is performed, because I can't see filing the lien until the work is performed. I think that would be the correct way. But it needs to be like the next day. We need to put that on there.
I thought it's supposed to be filed before we throw them down.
How can it, how can we file the lien till we get the work done? I mean, that's the way I've thought about this and you can't.
The lien is filed on the day of the fact.
Yeah.
The day of the work.
I mean, when you really think about it.
I understand.
We've already paid it.
Yeah, we've already paid it, yeah.
Of course we blow it off. We know what it's going to cost, and we're going to go through the process.
But you can't bill somebody for something that hadn't been, a service hadn't been done. There were some things we started to do and they changed and, you know, that's where I learned that. As soon as it's performed, we need to file the lien the next day. I'm telling you on this because when he was over there to pay his taxes, and this is new to me and it's new to everybody, but when they go over there to pay their taxes, if we don't have our lien there, guess what? It's another year before we get our lien paid. Unless he pays it voluntarily, I want everybody to realize that. But if anybody gets word of this, guess what they can do? They can go sell it before the lien gets put on there. That's why we've learned something here. We must get our liens filed the next day after we get the bill. So I've thought it through, that's how I think it needs to be.
You don't, are you saying that if I go pay my taxes, the first day I get that thing, then it's going to be another year?
Let me clarify it again. If the lien is not on your taxes when you pay your taxes?
Yeah, but if I go the first day, then if something happens, it's going to be a year before we can.
The first day, the takedown bill, that's what I'm saying, not the tax bill, but the takedown.
If I pay my taxes on February 1st, I'm good for a year.
You're right. So it might not have made any difference anyway, but see, if they have to be paid by the 15th, it's, and that, most people, not everybody, but a lot of people don't pay them till real close to the 15th.
But if they do, then they're exempt.
For a year.
They're going to wait a year anyway because you pay the taxes, a year ban, you pay 218 taxes.
Yeah, but if the lien's already on there, they'll have to pay that lien before they can pay the year before taxes. If it's on there. I know it's not, but that's why I'm saying, we're going to make sure our liens, as soon as we pay them, as soon as we get that bill, whether we write them their check or not, when we get their bill for the takedown, we sign off on it, we're going to file the lien the very next day. And you and I hadn't really crossed this bridge yet, but we are now, you know, is what I'm getting at. And this is something that I've had to learn the hard way after talking to the tax assessor. And she said, Mayor, that lien's not on here. And I said, what? I just assumed that it would be there. So we've got to have a policy, is what I'm saying. It's got to be our policy to file the lien the very next day after we approve the takedown. Okay. Anyway, that's what that's got to be, to protect the city. And so tomorrow, you and I will get on the liens on both properties, you and I, the ones we took down. Okay. I'm glad you brought that up because I had let that escape me from this immediate time. We were going to discuss that tomorrow night, but we really need to let everybody know about that. Is there anything else that you would like to discuss at this time? Okay. But we are having a planning commission meeting tomorrow night at 5:30, right? Okay. Because we're going to try to get that one started and maybe over or close to being over before our animal shelter meeting at 6:00. Are we going to have a parks and rec meeting at 6:00 Bill?
Four.
Yeah. I don't know that we need one, that's what I'm asking. Okay. Okay.
Probably will need to.
Okay.
But that's.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just stagger it, that's where I'm coming from. All right, community development, Mr. Herr. Well, under the community development, we did not get our grant. It's kind of under that right there. And so.
It's under parks and recreation.
Okay. Actually, where could be both? Okay, parks and recreation, Mr. Fagan.
I'll do this one, I've got several points. I'll do this one first. In the last committee meeting, we had talked about going on a program for the grass, for ryegrass, perennial ryegrass. I went over and visited with Don Fisher, with AgriTurk, and he set up a program if we want to do it. I got estimates for three fields, one, two, and five. Leaving in limbo, a softball field and a baseball field because that's generally schools, but I will need to get with them. Tammy, I need to see a copy of that agreement.
The 2020 agreement?
Yeah. And if they might want to do it, then we can do it all together. What they require, what he required based on the estimate for footage is perennial ryegrass with a total of about $2,432. You need to, you need to do what you call a starter fertilizer when you put it out. And after it takes root, do a regular fertilizer. It's going to amount to prices down there on the basis of the overall. He asked me about infield. I consider field one a softball field. I don't think it, softball field is not usually going to have grass in it. We're putting softball field in there, first of all, the grass. Iceball, so I just had to figure going infield to lead this program over. We're looking at about, with tax and all, we're looking at about $3,800 more or less. That's a perennial, which means that probably not to this extent that it would need to be done every year. According to him, according to Mr. Fisher. Not to the extent, not to the extent that you want to do. They oversee some, according to him, and I'm not an expert, but Mr. Fisher is an expert. I ask those questions.
But he's recommended perennial over annual?
Well, that's what he called it, perennial ryegrass.
Yep, help me John. Is that what y'all really need? Perennial? Okay.
It's been good for about six, seven years, and then that gets turned out every year. It's a half regular or four regular.
Okay. It's a totally different look of the grass and I'm.
He gave me, he gave me the explanation, he said they do a bunch of them. That the ryegrass will get you through a baseball season, and then the maroon starts taking over. And then in the fall, you have to come back and oversee again the grass. And not that he said you wouldn't have to be that extensive, but I'm going to go into more detail when we do it. But it is, he requested not, he indicated it would be advisable to do it during this hot weather, dry weather, but the seasons are changing now, so we probably need to get it out by the end of the month. We don't, as far as I know, the city doesn't have a sprayer. Maybe the school does, if we can maybe use. I'll talk to them about that and try to find some other alternatives for that. But again, I've said that is something that we do need to go with. Every time out, it could be more or less, a little less or maybe a little more. We ask you one year.
Yeah.
As per year.
You put your fertilizer out with the ryegrass?
Put a starter fertilizer out, and then he said after it takes root, he said usually in November, you come back with a regular fertilizer. On 32? Yeah. And I would assume you do your, use graze zone or something for weed control after the season.
He's going to advise you on all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I've got a small, you know, grass seeder, I know you're welcome to, but when I go get grass seed, I have it mixed with fertilizer from, you know, the.
Well, it's too tight in there, you couldn't use a.
Not turn around?
Well, then, what I'll operate. So I'll go behind a.
That's what I've got.
Anyway, that's, that's motion. There is a motion. Yeah. I so moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
All right. I'll give, what's this lady's name, I read that lady.
Sharon.
Can I be with her? This big project. Can it go along together or something like this? Um. I'd like to build on those fields, you know, they're not really doing right. If we go up and lift those houses, that's a softball field, number one, you can still clock live. We're going to have.
I never, I never put those signs up. I don't go, I never find that number that way.
It would be logical to have a field one here, field two, field three, field four.
Way up, way up here, if you're going counterclockwise, one, two, baseball field, and then three.
One, two, three, four, five, makes a start pattern.
I don't know why they're locked there.
Most people walk in the field, if they go over field two, it's going to be the second one that has, if they're going clockwise, it's not like that. And I, I mean, that's just.
It don't necessarily be.
It's just think the size.
It might have something to do with.
Could have been the way they were built.
Born, yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, this should clockwise, makes a lot more sense.
Now that they're all done, I think, you know, organization would be a good thing.
Five, six, and so. Nothing but NASCAR.
If they explain what they're doing. They're going places.
Are you going to set a meeting for tomorrow night?
I thought we already agreed to leave tomorrow.
All right, set a time. 7?
What's the meeting?
5:30, we're planning in.
Six.
And then we got, well, the animal shelter is going to be at 6:00. So 6:30, 6:30? All right. 6:30 for Parks and Rec.
I'm looking at something, I've been looking at it before. I just haven't had it seen over there. I've got a relative that works for Sunrise. I'm looking at a, trying to cut a deal, maybe to give some advertising on a, kind of a gator. Yeah, with the band, we need that for field preparation. It's a lot of probably back to you on the road. We had talked about this new tee ball field, running water to it. Andy, in fact, he first mentioned it, then he came back and gave me a call. We don't pay the water at that mobile home anymore. So in order to do that, we're going to have to run a meter. So maybe deposit. We're looking at about, what's it, $1,000?
I believe so.
We have to put a whole meter in there. Before we would provide the water to the police officer.
Andy, would there be a reason why we couldn't waive that meter fee for the city?
I get my audit, but I think as long as it's brought up in the meeting within the
Yeah, I'd like to see that done if it's approved by the auditor.
I understand what you worked out. The grant was brought up, we liked one point, get the application for RRO, to present our case for the grant. We did everything that we possibly could, talking to the carrier. Probably what might have knocked us out is you received points for not having received a grant within the past 10 years, and we had, so we didn't give those, we didn't give those points. Other than that, our application is still good. We will have to do some, have some more public hearings next year and meet some other requirements, but that application is still, we'll go back again. I do intend to get another deal for bonus playground. And the equipment for a do it yourself construct. And I'll present it to the council when I get it. Leave our grant application in there and you can use that grant for lighting on that field.
No, wouldn't.
Not everyone knows where they might.
You can never have too much, you know, playground equipment either, so just have something a little different.
Well, we set the grant up at the beginning, and believe me, the people that have the playground equipment, they know what's going in for the grant, and they know what people have to pay for their stuff, and there's various, different supplies. And plus, if we do a lot of work ourselves, we're still staying on what the, what you need, any requirements. I'll get back to the council as soon as I get another deal.
That's good.
That's it for me.
Police committee.
We have sixteen hundred eighty-four calls for service, four hundred and three service checks, two hundred fifty-three traffic stop, hundred and nine citations, ninety-eight warrants served. Thirty-seven city ordinance warnings. Uh, community service paper forty-four, felony cases filed with seven, misdemeanor forty-one, parole business a hundred and thirty, registered sex offenders six, and one sex offender on busy. He's left on willing.
Well, I'm gonna just get some approval, we got four items, and then I'll give you a total for these purchases. Please, the practice more. So fingerprint kits, these kits goes on vehicles for one hundred and sixty cents, uh, thirty-two dollars per cent, blue guns, three twenty-five, weighters. Little training classes, uh, measure wheels for accidents, seventy-two dollars and forty-three cents, senior license, match license for vehicles, two seven three fifty-six, total of seven fourteen nine.
Make motion be approved purchase.
All those in favor, unanimous.
There's some things that need to be ordered, uh, we have an emergency evacuation kit, where we take our stuff and throw it down, and fire department is basically for. Say emergency situations and such, so we have to evacuate our precinct and go to the field. We have a handheld. Stay radio, but it's requiring to also have a package to have a backup battery. Purchase a backup battery, which is a hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. It's also requiring that we have a handheld radio for the dispatch to grab on the run. Uh, we actually, we've got some issues with some of the ones we have now, like our one item is a low end, the high end is better. Prices for those are a thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and nineteen cents, we actually have two of those. One for dispatch for the emergency evacuation, and then one for backup, of course, for myself. And so the protocol act, we pre-approved our order of these things, two thousand six hundred and eighty-six dollars and six cents.
I saw no.
Same.
Let me answer to your second. Alright, all those in favor, unanimous.
Thanks, great thing, or items that we need to remove from the six apartment, part of the monitor, moving this thing and that, better about it, and so she had, not to be remind, but just, uh. Just somebody that, uh, is an old alcohol. I don't wanna use here in our, because we like the white county, so we, you know, let's be. Power and quality, that's one F P M, we don't have, uh, tennis, two, got retinal radar, the stuff for back, it's a, we don't have these three items that. We need to remember that one.
I didn't, yeah, I made it, cause I can't find them.
Auditor.
I think so, because she said bring it before the council, but that, but, but these are not the only items. There's a Dixie X W two thousand two dash sixty mower that needs to come off, but that was all that you had, Rock. Yes, of course, yeah, for police. Do you wanna do it all at one time, or you wanna wait? Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
I think we sold it, no, we don't have any. Okay. We're sold it in, it was awesome.
It's just, it's just to clear up our list. And you're gonna list some more when we get down here to it?
No, no, that is it.
That is it?
But the inventory list will need to be what I'm gonna call cleaned up. We have items listed that are, we no longer have, we've sold, or I failed to take them off, or I didn't know, or, or they've been scrapped. And we just need to go down and make sure that, that what I have is what they have, the department has.
So you really are not gonna present all of that, you're just letting us know that we need to do that.
I'm, I'm telling you, it's coming up, I don't know when, but it's coming up.
We'll have this, okay, gotcha, but those items that we voted on?
Yes.
Come off, okay. Okay, uh, street? You got some else?
The, uh, shelter told me the other day that they need two catch poles, they have none whatsoever. Said they needed a five-foot catch pole and a seven-foot catch pole. They have no catch poles, the one they did have, when they tighten it up, it will not loosen. So they were telling me we, we needed to get two ordered for them.
How much is that?
I don't know.
They're not gonna be a, a whole lot, but it, it's a tool that we gotta have, I know that, I've made some homemade ones before, but, uh, they don't need a homemade one.
Maybe we order whatever they need.
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous.
It's both, it's both, street and alley committee.
Uh, I got a letter here from Jeremy, but first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Larry, to the council, and the city for giving me the opportunity to work here. It has been a great experience for me, I hope I might be the chance to opportunity to work here again, at this time, I must offer my resignation, thank you. Uh, other than that, I, I don't know, I don't hope you do not, I've been overseeing this.
Active when?
Today. I don't know where you sent.
All those in favor, unanimous.
Resignation accepted. No, they've been doing a lot of work, cleaning out the ditches and whatnot, and, uh, solid waste is, is on everybody's mind, and I wanna remind everybody, since we're on, on the video tonight. Please, uh, make plans to take a lot of your solid waste, as much as possible, uh, city does not take tires, but the White County cleanup. Except the seventeenth and eighteenth, I'm not sure about that, but I'm pretty sure it is of October, so I mean, it's pretty, pretty quick. Is it October, November, do you, do you know?
I think it's October.
I think it's, it's October. No, what now?
That's a setup pickup tires.
Yeah, but you have to take them over there, I think. We do pick them up? Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. I did not know that. And that's anytime? But I think the, uh, Great American Cleanup, you know, White County Cleanup, this is, I think it's the seventeenth and eighteenth, but I'm not positive about that, what is it? Okay, seventeenth through the nineteenth. Take them to the White County Fairgrounds, and, um, if you can pull it up online, White County Cleanup, and it'll tell you the items that you can and can't take. But I would like to see as many of our residents take as much over there as they can to, uh, not put as much, uh, you know, hardship on the city. So, uh, it is time to clean up our city right now. Um. So, airport committee, Mr. Rufford?
Okay. On the airport to reach crack seal, seal coat, paint stripe, and the city match is seven thousand. Okay, there's another one they give me to level the runway, asphalt, seal coat, seal coat. Asphalt taxiway, stripe it, the city match is ninety thousand.
Yeah.
That's the two I've got.
This, this late, I would like to make a recommendation that we do the seal coat just as soon as possible, cause I know that it needs it, I don't know how many people have been down there to look at it.
Larry told me that he was, had met with some lady the other day. And, uh, said that they, she has this stuff that you can fill the crack seal with, for ninety dollars for a five-gallon bucket.
I've seen some of that stuff, but this, this company that does the seal coat, they oughta know.
Right.
About that, but, but, uh, I'd like to see that, of course, the cracks be filled, you know, and do that, but if we don't get started on that, uh, it's, it's gonna be too late, you know, in the season, so, uh, you're the airport man.
I'd like to see us press the airport and say why we don't charge money when people land, why we don't charge no more than we charge for them buildings, which should be getting revenue from people using it. I don't see, they say we're bringing in money from the airport, I don't see it, I haven't seen it.
It's only the economy that people come and go from there, but it, it's more of a recreational thing.
I mean, we don't have, we don't have luxury hotels, we don't have cars that can rent them in, so.
Right.
We're the general.
The courtesy car someday, they, I think they've had them temporarily in the past, and they would like to have one again, a courtesy car, where people could fly in here and go eat, and go back, and, uh, I know Jed and Rita for one, I mean, they go to other places and do that, and other people. They called me to ask if we've got a courtesy car, and I tell them no. Uh, sometimes I've offered to go pick them up, you know, that, that I know, if I can't, but, uh, it just, uh, it is a courtesy thing, and it is a recreational thing. Uh, any big business that, uh, that's gonna wanna come and fly in, uh, they're gonna go to Cersei, or to Basil, or to Newport.
I might believe the rest, that might be value, like, that's gonna generate a little more money.
Yeah, the flying surface probably, it, it, you know, helps the farmers, there's no question about that, I mean, that is a big deal right there. I mean, we are an agricultural, you know, center, and, and, but there again, uh, we, we had Dennis, you know, look into what needs to be done, they've met, and they've talked, and. Uh, uh, you've heard him say how much the leveling is, I don't think the city can afford that, that without a grant. And I don't think anybody will argue that point, but protecting our investment in that runway, we need that seal coat, it's just like anybody's driveway, you see responsible business owners putting a seal coat on their driveways. And parking lots, and that's the same thing that the city needs.
And we need to look into the financial part, I think we can generate more money from what goes on that.
Well, uh, maybe we need to have an airport committee meeting right here, and have a, a public meeting, you know, involved with it, and see how much interest, you know, that there is. But as far as the hangars, uh, we only have the, enough hangars of the interest that we have, and they're, they're renting them and building the hangars themselves. And that's the way, it's all, that's just the way they've always done it here, and I've learned about it since January, I mean, I've known a little bit about it in the past, but I've learned about it since January. And, um, there is no money to be gained from that, because we have nothing to provide, you know, at this time for them, except a place to allow them to, to build a hangar, to rent that space. And some of them have had, been renting them for decades, you know, and a lot of the same people, a lot of the same families, and, uh. I don't have a plane, I wish I did, but I mean, it would be nice, you know, to be able to have a, a hangar down there, and a lot of people have it on their mind, it's just, right now, that's all we've got. And, uh, but as far as the revenue being generated by the, uh, airplane, you know, the airplanes coming and going, it's purely recreational, other than the agricultural use, and agricultural use is huge. I mean, they wake me up every day. So, I mean, so in the spring, and the, all through the summer, and the fall, they, they, they use it all the time, twenty-four, seven, and I do mean twenty-four, seven. And, uh, we need to take care of our airport, cause it is a very big investment for the city, and I'd like to entertain somebody to make in a, you know, the motion to, to seal coat it, because if you have been down there, you know that it needs it.
Second.
All those in favor? David, you don't know?
And then one, one other one is, uh, Gary Biddle, and Jed both told me that it's been about a year ago that Don Rainey got the lease on the buildings to go over it and change it. And they've never heard nothing back from him on it, and it's been almost a year. Not the buildings, but their hangars.
Is that to real, reevaluate the cost, the, the rental cost?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? And it's been the same for quite some time, right? It's only like, what, a hundred, a hundred dollars?
And, and they said there's some mistakes in it also.
Yeah, that's something, we, we do need to have that eval, reevaluated, and, uh, Dennis, we need to get you to go ahead and set up the, uh, the seal coat, you know, situation.
Okay.
This that we voted on, is that for the seven thousand dollar bid, or?
Nine thousand dollars, wasn't it? No, 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 that's just to fill the cracks. Um. No, that, that's to take this stuff, plus do this right here, this, this seal coat right here is like putty that you go in there and. Yeah, yeah, but then the seal coat is to go everywhere, yeah, but this stuff is supposed to be good, and Larry and I have talked about, you know, different companies have contacted him and me to use it even in our streets, it's just that, that Larry has. A good product that you'd like right now, that, that. Right.
This lady just, and brought this to my kitchen, said they sell it out to different airports, and they fill it up with their cracks. They stamp it in the ground, and all that's moved out, and that it stays in there, playing, playing on it, they golf on it, you know, it's a five-six.
Yeah. And, and there again, that's to fill the cracks, and then still go over and seal coat it, I mean, the seal coat is for everything, cause there's a lot of little cracks that you're not gonna fill with, with that right there. I've heard them talk about that, have y'all discussed this product that he's talking about? Okay, it's kind of, I don't call it new, but I mean, it's something new for us, and, but, yeah, but there's been companies that have talked to you about new products that are similar to this, to fill up our potholes, but you like your product that you're using right now. Yeah, yeah, and that, we've already had that discussion, that was my point, yeah, so, uh, I, I feel like we're doing good now, and I just think that we need to get you to go ahead and, and arrange for that seal coat, cause it's time.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's move on, and then, uh, if y'all wanna look at, you know, the next time, you know, and doing that field work, you know, with that, I'm, I'm all about that, but we just need to protect our investment with, with the seal coat right now. Um, buildings and grounds, Mr. Byer?
Uh. We were looking at redoing the ceiling at the senior center, in order to redo the main meeting room where they need, because of all the different issues. It would take one hundred and sixty ceiling tiles, that'd be forty-eight two-by-two, one hundred and twelve two-by-four. According to numbers that I've received from Lowe's, the Lowe's price for that would be right at six hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. And Ball Not Lumber, that same would be right at seven ninety-nine, it's a difference in the package.
How much?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars difference.
That's relaxes by local, Ken Chuck, I need to ask you something on this right here, did you look in the closets, they had me come down there on something else, you, uh, at the senior center? They didn't, they didn't think you looked in the closets?
Yeah, there's about, tiny about four.
Yeah, there's about nine, and I counted, there's nine, about nine total in both closets, so ten, ten more, you know. Yeah. They come, don't they come in, uh, cases?
Uh, the, uh, that Lowe's, the two-by-twos come in sixteen pack, and the two-by-fours come in a ten-pack, and packaging that was quoted to me, Ball Not Lumber, was an eight-pack.
Okay.
Different, same pattern, same, uh, just a little different, and Mr. Rogers was telling me that, uh, like, if we were to redo the kitchen, there would be a difference, and it would have to be a sealed type tile, but I believe right now, we. Uh, we've looked at doing the whole thing, and, and just to give you an idea of how different that would be, if we were to totally re-tile, this is not basing any, uh, sealed tile, sealed tile would cost much. Uh, from Lowe's, you would be looking at a full package number of fifteen thirty-one twenty-six, and from Ball Not Lumber, about sixteen seventy-seven, so there's about a thousand dollar difference, if you're just doing the main room versus doing the whole building.
And plus those closets, if you wanna add that. And plus those closets, if you wanna add that.
Well, uh, I've got, uh, I've got, there's one closet. That's.
I went down there and looked, and they said they wanted me to be aware that, that, uh, they didn't think Chuck got all the closets. Because you can't see them, I mean, you know, we don't have to do them, it's just, I'm just thinking, you know, while we're doing them, it wouldn't hurt to, to, to do it all.
If we will do a little more research to get all the numbers and to know exactly what we'd have to do, we can do that, I just wanted to present some numbers to you.
Well, if the council, so moved to do so, give you permission to, uh, uh, get your numbers together and spend up, uh, two thousand dollars, you know, on this project, would that, uh, that would give you a little room right there, wouldn't it?
That, that's just material, it's not, um, because we would have to take care of that.
We talked about doing that with our own city workers, what we first start, so we just need to, uh, you know, it's, it, it takes time, I mean, my, my banner office is the same type of roof, it takes time to do that, but those that aren't there, the, you know, the spaces are perfect right there, and those just pop, pop in and pop out, it just takes a little time. So, um. That was from the leak that I think that we had before we replaced the roof.
And what we were looking at, replacing all of them in the main room, was the fact that you're gonna, it's gonna be hard to match those same color.
It will be hard to match them. But see, there again, we can take the ones, you know, the, the better ones out of there and put the ones in the closet, so let's just stay, let's just stay with that, that, that'll work. Okay, I don't think anybody'll argue on that. But, you know, the leaks that we had, then it, you know, that, that was what it is, and, and, you know, I've had people come into my office and say, boy, uh, these look odd, and they do look odd, so, I mean, we need to take pride in what we've got in there because it's a nice center. So, um. Two grand? Yep. So moved.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Good project for you, Dennis. And, you know, with, there again, we can get city personnel, or we can hire, you know, someone to do it, like the Victory Life boys, you know, they'll go down there and, and, you know, that'd be the cheapest that we can get done, hopefully at the high time. Uh, but that's just an idea. Now, um, anything else on the buildings and grounds, uh, you know, when we're gonna get started on that building?
He called me and asked me who was authorized to sign.
That's me.
I haven't seen anything.
I hadn't either. I'll call him tomorrow, first thing in the morning, okay? Thank you. Anything else, that should wind it up. Okay. Um, personnel committee?
We're on May ten twenty-eight.
Ten twenty-eight, right there.
Is it a full council meeting?
Committee.
Just committee, personnel committee?
I'd like whatever going to be there.
Yeah, this is something that the full council needs to be at this one, I mean, it's, it's something that everybody needs to participate in. So, do you wanna call a committee meeting, or you wanna call a special council meeting? I mean, that would be. I don't remember.
Just what?
Well, that's what I was thinking, and that's why I said that. Um, I don't wanna put that just, just, just on you or whatever, because there's things that we need to just discuss.
All the council, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, nepotism and, and a lot of things, there, there's things that we all might bring to the table, uh. Would everybody be okay with that, instead of committee meeting, to call a full, a special council meeting to discuss these things? Yeah, it's either that, or we do the committee meeting like he said, and then we'll bring it to the full council for approval of the changes. Do you feel okay with that? Do what, David? I think it's best, I mean, this is something real serious right here.
Probably department heads and any interested employee.
Definitely. That's why it needs to be a, a, a special council meeting, kinda called it on that date?
Check the book?
Yep. Ten twenty-eight nineteen, special council meeting. Um, object, uh, handbook, reconciliation, or what, whatever you wanna call it, you know. All right. Thank you. Um, water and sewer?
Uh, we had two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars seventeen cents on past dues, had meter deposits of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five. And we have one of the blowers itself, it pumps the air through our sewer system, or oxygenation pond, or what, what's the term for that? Or basin?
Basin.
And, uh, we have, uh, we've got two quotes on it, either a new blower or a reconditioned one that had, has a warranty. It's, uh, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
For the reconditioned one?
Right. No, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I tried to bank. Four thousand nine hundred and three dollars, the one, the cheaper one.
The reconditioned one?
Right. Yeah, remanufactured, and it's, they're both are different, just from different people, offering lots.
And the new one is how much?
Six thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars.
So how much we talking difference?
Fifteen hundred.
And they both are, uh, working for one year.
Okay. Do you feel comfortable, wanna recommend one over the other?
It's water design, uh, plants set up for free, we've been running off, if one of them go out.
Well, we're, we're only guaranteed a year, then, there, there you go. There came a motion.
So moved.
Which one are we gonna purchase?
The re-manufactured one.
Re-manufactured. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
You can stop.
Thanks for your time on that.
There.
Okay. Well, they gave you credit for it, so. All righty, anything else on water and sewer, we had the walkthrough the other day? You wanna go ahead and make a report on the walkthrough, I know you did Thursday, just tell everybody again.
Good, uh, they were playing signs, everything, everything with airlines out, uh, everything did even more, they're putting two, they're also. You may have to, uh, we'll talk to Cersei about seeding, uh, basin, activating slums. We talked to ADQ, Mr. Moore once, and, uh, he suggested that we're having a little problem, uh, generating activated slums, we may have to seed. All the knowledge is the plant operator, and then we'll talk to Cersei.
When I drove by there a couple days ago and smelled that place, that they were activating it all right, made me think about it, let me tell you. So. All right, now, he, he was saying about two hundred and fifty dollars or something like that?
I, I'm not real sure, I haven't talked to him.
Yeah, just approximately, that was, that was Paul. Yeah. Whatever it is, we just, we just need to get it done, I want the council to be aware of that, so. Yeah. All righty, um, moving right along, in the old business, Ballinob Water Rate Ordinance, uh, Tim, you wanna read that for us?
This is, uh, before the City Council of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, Ordinance Number two thousand nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance amending the rates to be charged for residential and commercial trash collection for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Do you want me to read this in its entirety?
It's, it's for one time, I'd like for you to read it.
Whereas, the City Council for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, has determined the need to increase the fees charged for the collection of residential and commercial trash within the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, in order to pay for such service, the city has contracted for with waste management. And whereas the City Council for this, uh, uh, for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, has further determined an order can continue to, an order, to, uh, some words like that. Uh, well, uh, that's what I, what I see, but I was waiting to read on down in there and see if we had.
It's a typo.
If it talked about green environmental anywhere, but I don't see it.
Put together real quick, but it's, we need to make that correction, uh, green environmental instead of waste management, because everybody knows that's what it is.
Okay.
That, and that was on the old contract, is what it was, and when they go into these computers, they just change the names on them and, and roll on with it, and this one was obviously not changed. Uh, well, if we make the change right now and let her read it, I don't see why we can't.
Whereas, the City Council for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, has further determined an order, and there's a typo there, to continue the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, and so efficient and economical collection of residential and commercial trash can be maintained, it is necessary that an emergency be declared and this ordinance be adopted and be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage. Now therefore be it hereby ordained and affirmed by the City Council of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, as follows. Section one, that from and after the effective date of this ordinance, rates charged for residential and commercial trash collection shall be as follows. Residential per car, thirteen twelve per month, commercial per car, twenty point thirty-six per month, two yard container with one week pickup per week, eighty dollars per month, two yard container with twice a week pickup, hundred forty-eight dollars per month, four yard container with one pickup per week, a hundred and four dollars per month, four yard container with twice a week pickup, a hundred ninety-five per month, a four yard container with three pickups per week, two hundred and eighty-three per month, a six yard container with one pickup per week, hundred and twenty-nine per month, a six yard container with twice a week pickup, two hundred forty-four per month, a six yard container with three pickups per week, three hundred and sixty per month, an eight yard container with one pickup per week, a hundred and fifty-one per month, eight yard container with twice a week pickup, two hundred and eighty-eight per month, an eight yard container with three pickups per week, four hundred and twenty per month. Section two, that any and all ordinances or parts of ordinances which may be in conflict with this ordinance shall be and hereby are repealed. Section three is the emergency clause. The Ballinob City Council has determined that an emergency exists concerning the fees charged for the collection of residential and commercial trash, and that the immediate adoption and enforcement of this ordinance being necessary for the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, the provisions hereof shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, passed and adopted this seventh day of October, two thousand nineteen.
What was the number on it?
Five.
I moved with second, first reading, ordinance number twenty-nine thing, dash, oh, five, they suspended rule, asked for the second reading, with the eighty-two to five.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, Vince. Before the City Council of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, Ordinance Number two thousand nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance amending the rates to be charged for residential and commercial trash collection for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I moved with se- second reading, ordinance number twenty-nine thing, dash, oh, five, suspend the rule, ask for third and final reading, ordinance number twenty-nine thing, dash, oh, five.
Second.
All those in favor? It's unanimous. Before the City Council of the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, Ordinance Number two thousand nineteen dash zero five, an ordinance amending the rates to be charged for residential and commercial trash collection for the City of Ballinob, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I moved with second, third and final reading, ordinance number twenty-nine thing, dash, zero, five, accepted this final, suspended rule, and asked for, uh, load on this, on the emergency clause.
All those in favor?
I might want to, do we need to ask Don for sure, on that, seeing as how we made the change?
Yeah, just have him make it and send it to you tomorrow.
We'll have to get a corrected ordinance.
That's what I say, ask him if.
We've read it correctly.
I read, I changed mine.
Yeah, I do too.
Everybody changed it tonight, so just have him send us a correct, a corrected one tomorrow, and we'll sign it.
Yeah.
That should be fine. This is, is ours, I mean, I could've made it, you could've made it, you're making a difference, it makes it, you know.
We still, we still need to adopt the emergency clause, Johnny.
Correct.
She's flipping.
Second, Vince? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you. It's been very important. We've been losing money on that, and it's time that we got everything in order. And I wanna remind everybody that if you still got a waste management bin, um, if it's not picked up by waste management in the next, this week, that Green Environmental said they will pick them up and take them out there, and, and I'm not against the street department, if y'all see some, take them on out there after this week, okay? Yeah, yeah, excuse me, changed that, didn't we? Yeah, parking lot, the old pickle plant parking lot. Great. Okay, next thing in line is a Ballinob animal shelter, um, the chief brought up, you know, and, and, uh, Dennis brought up about to catch, you know, uh, poles, got that approval. Uh, is there anything else that we need to talk about, the animal shelter tonight? I think we're just gonna make our meeting tomorrow night, that's why they're not here. We're gonna have our meeting tomorrow night, right, Dennis, at, uh, six o'clock. Shouldn't take very long. We're just setting our meeting tomorrow night, chief, at six o'clock, thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh, but I, you know, I appreciate everybody helping with the animal shelter. Uh, we got nationwide attention on our animal shelter, we pretty much cleaned it out, we've already started putting them back in there, but that's what it's for. So we wanna be efficient, and, uh, we're gonna be looking at making a few changes tomorrow night. New business, foothills lane of lights, um, I had asked, uh, Ms. Ruby had asked us to donate fifteen hundred dollars, but, uh, Janet, could you, could you speak on that for us and tell us what the latest, what your recommendation would be on that, I know you're on that committee? I know that she didn't wanna be here, but I told her I would bring it up and ask for the fifteen hundred dollars. Okay, um, I'm just trying to help with that, I mean, if, if, uh, I'm gonna recommend that, that we, and I, I wanna explain, I did ask the auditor, uh, about what we could do to help the foothills lane of lights, she said we could buy a, uh, display, or we could, uh, enter into a contract of, uh, you remember what she called that, Amy?
It's just a contract.
Contractor service, I think, something like that, and, and, and still set, set that amount, you know, but, um, I mean, we, we could wait if y'all would rather wait, but I mean, we're, time is kind of the essence, you know, on it too. I mean, we already started setting the lights up out there, so, um.
She asked for fifteen, huh?
She first asked me for fifteen, and then, uh, we wanted to comply, and, uh, if y'all, whatever y'all feel comfortable with, I'd like to see us do more than that. She's gonna do a real nice tree up in the front lot, uh, to get attention with all the people driving, and to let people know, hey, this is it. Uh, uh, that, that tree could cost up to ten thousand dollars, uh, but I just didn't feel like the city would wanna spend that kind of money, but, uh, I'm, I'm, the display, the school bought one last year that they can use it for dual, dual use, it was a bulldog, lighted on a trailer. Uh, the city could look at the book, uh, and, and pick out, and, uh, I don't, I don't, really don't know, I, twenty-five, how much?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five? So, would, would the council be interested in, in allotting, you know, up to five thousand and let, uh, I, I don't mind having Miss Janet, she's, she's on the committee, uh, to, uh, to, you know, we appropriated five thousand, let her decide, they've got a nice book to look through, and, and buy a, a display that would be owned by the city, and if we saw a need at some point in time. a need at some point in time, I'm not wanting the foothills lane of lights to disband, but I'm saying if it ever, something ever changes, the city would own it, we could use it for whatever, but, uh, I think we should. And be in a parade or whatnot? I, I, and, and she told me that, and, and that's why I'm glad you're putting that in there, that's what I had in mind was, was looking through the book and kind of having a custom made, she told me, you know, how they had it made, where they had it made, but, uh, I'd forgotten that part, yeah, but you know that, that's why I was wanting to put you in, in charge of that. Okay, okay.
She didn't tell us that.
Yes, she spoke to me and Tammy both about it, cause, uh, yeah, she just said that it needed to be owned by the city, and that was, that was basically it right there.
Yeah, we did, yeah, it, it's property of the city, but we, we pay for it and display it.
Yeah, and I have no problem about finding a place to store it, you know, in our new building maybe that we would build, I would just like to see the city represented, you know, in a, in a nice manner, and, uh, she asked for fifteen hundred just to kind of use, you know, but, uh, when I found out by the auditor what we could do, uh, I think we could buy something like the school did for that five thousand fifty five, whatever the council wanted to spend, and, um, and represent our city like it needs to be.
Okay, well, Tammy says that we can donate money, but we have to have a contract. She might could use money better than she could a display.
Well, it, I thought it was a contract of services, and, and I never did understand, I didn't, we didn't really know.
I didn't specify.
What you, what you're doing, well, the reason why I'm saying that is because, you know, we have a contract with the senior center, we give them money monthly, uh, you know, and that, that wouldn't be any different than the lane of lights.
It'd be like the sponsorship then is basically what we're talking about.
Kinda like, yeah.
And we just.
Only she would spend it as she saw the need, and, and they spend theirs, it's nice of it.
We could, we're eating the brunch every day. Okay, and, and we made, and you've got a point right there, and that's what she first asked for, and since we don't have time to get a custom one built, look at next year doing something bigger.
I'll second.
Sounds good to me. Contract of services, be co-sponsored, you know, that, that's how she does things, co-sponsored by the City of Ball knob, she'll put a sign up, I'm sure. Uh, take a vote on it, yeah?
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. Mary Smith, you got the floor. It's a warning notice. They're working, they're working on it, they hadn't moved in yet. They wanted, they wanted to move in, and they're not gonna get their, I told them, if, uh, we got it approved tonight, because he has, you know, you know, fixed these things, and I went and looked at it myself today, that, uh, that we could give them the water and, and they could look at moving into it now, but, I mean, there are things that I discussed with, with Shannon about it, that I wanted to see him take pride in his, his building, you know, in, in there, and I want him to continue to work on it, and he assured me that he would, but, but I still wanna make sure everybody realized, this is a warning notice, not a condemnation, he needs to come in, we're gonna discuss it tomorrow night, and I ask him if he wanna come, we'll discuss it at the planning commission meeting.
Say when he's gonna have this stuff on his way to take care of, and it should be done by a licensed plumber and electrician.
Yep, well, those, those, uh, those things have already been corrected, I mean, that's just it, and Chuck can go down there. I can't tell you that, cause I don't know, I just saw that they were done. They, they've got a, some kind of agreement. Barnhart is the legal owner of record, but they have made their agreement, and that's where Shannon comes in there, and Shannon's been, you know, taking care of it. No, I haven't. But Barn, Barnhart, Barnhart did call me, he's called me two or three times about it, and let me know that that's what was going on. Well, it's like Barnhart still owns it, and so Shannon would be his agent until they changed the paperwork, I mean, that's kind of what it would be. Yeah, he's, he's the legal owner, yes. And, and he's, he's. And he, he said to let him know what he needs to do, is what he told me today, and. So, yeah, and, and the, and the thing of this, we got the planning commission meeting tomorrow night, and I knew that we were going to discuss this property there, uh, you don't wanna make the decision then about getting Chuck to go down the next day, or you want Chuck to go down and inspect it tomorrow, before your meeting? What they've done, that, that's what I want Chuck to go down there and inspect what they done, I don't want him to take my word for it, I mean, he needs to, he's the code inspector. Well, Shannon represent, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that Shannon fixed it himself, because he's representing himself as the owner, even though he's not the owner of record, he's, you know. Is that what you want Barnhart to come in and tomorrow and, and request thirty days? You can't, you can't, what, 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 you can't condemn it without going through the process. It's a warning notice is to. Well, okay. And again, all. Okay, you've got two dates on here, eight thirteen, and then you got nine nine. Nine sixteen?
Nine sixteen.
Okay. Instead of nine nine? And then Chuck's is with nine sixteen, I see now, I see that book you call back now, I got you.
Now that is to condemn the property? By resolution? All those in favor? Now tell me again the physical address of this property. Eight twenty four South nine. Now that's G B Barnhart.
Okay, so you've received a unanimous, right? Vote to condemn it, now the process of the condemnation, I want to make everybody, let everybody understand, to, the next step is to, uh, uh, get these items that Mr. Mowers has got on the list completed, and, uh, when they are completed, um, then a certificate of occup, uh. Right, occupancy, thank you, certificate of occupancy, uh, and. Well, they cleaned the place up down there and started painting, and, yeah, somebody needed a place to live, and, and, and they approached Shannon, they would, you know, help clean it up, and, and they have, they've got ten people down there working today, eight, ten, and they've cut all the overgrown fence row down, it, it's amazing, it looks like a jungle back there, I mean, it looks like a yard, you know, uh, and, and what I've seen is pretty impressive, but, uh, but anyway, we've got it condemned, and, uh, he'll have to comply with, with all these things to get it up to code, and then apply to you again for a, a certificate of occupancy, but he needs to get a building permit, is that what we're saying right here, I wanna make sure everybody understands, just like I do. Okay, is that gonna be called a building permit though, is what I'm trying to clarify? Okay. So it needs a plumber permit and electrical permit? And a licensed, licensed, licensed plumber permit and a licensed electrician permit? I, I wanna understand a hundred percent, which, and I want everybody else to understand a hundred percent, cause there's more houses, you know, that need to be done this way. And, uh, Mr. Barnhart wanted to know what he needed to do to, uh, you know, to help Shannon get it done, so, all right. They, evidently they have got some properties that they've done some type of trade sale together, and they worked, anybody that knows them both, they know that they're kind of got partnerships going on a lot of things, and, uh, Mr. Barnhart's called me two or three times, wanting to make sure, he knew what he needed to have Shannon to do, and. Nope, nope, not to mind the well. Well, he considered himself the owner, and we found out that he's not the legal owner of record, see, that's the difference right there, and they said, well, he's waiting on Jimmy Barnhart to, to get the paperwork done, well, uh, we've got it condemned, so it changes things, you know, now we've got it condemned, and now they're gonna have to comply by the condemnation standard, get it up to city code, there's no more discussion on that, because that's what has to be done.
Okay, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The resolution, is it prepared and ready?
That, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to say, we, we, we've got a warning notice right here, do we not need to give them thirty days on the warning notice before we do the condemnation, is that right or wrong? Gotcha, and then got a second one, got a second one, another ten days, so, uh, we've, we're past that, we can end it tonight, okay? Makes, wanna make sure everybody is, is with that, we had a moratorium on the condemnations, but we kept working to get ready for them, and that's basically what, you know, putting it in a nutshell what we've done, correct? Okay. All right, okay, and I had asked, uh, you know, last Thursday night to lift the moratorium, basically, and to, to make that decision, to make the condemnation, we've obviously lifted the moratorium, what it amounts to. All right, let's move on, Liz Smith Mead, uh, is she here tonight, I don't think she's here tonight, uh, just to clarify, she was asking that, uh, the city, uh, refund for an extra garbage bin, uh, she had been billed for two, it was on her, uh, original request, uh, our city attorney, uh, basically advised, uh, we don't have to pay it, because she was being billed for it, and she paid it for eight years, yeah, so, she's not here, I'm gonna consider it a dead issue, if she wants to make it a civil matter, that's her own choice, okay? Now, you're deleting of the inventory items, you're gonna make us a list?
We've already done the ones tonight.
Okay, and we've, we've approved the ones above, so, uh, Ball knob District Court, clerk, Mr. Joyce, Ms. Joyce, rather? Like you said, you've taken on more, more job duties with these other departments, uh, I've addressed it with you, and, and, you know, this is just not a normal situation for our handbook, she's asking for a dollar in our raise for these two employees. You're asking for a dollar in our raise for each one?
That's, those are, that's well within our, uh, labor grade, our existing policy. That's, those are, that's well within our labor grade, our existing policy.
All those in favor of this motion? Unanimous?
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Bradenville, Bulldog Record Service, would you like to come address the council?
I'd like to. I have two separate services. I want to do the bulldog record and the police. I want to do 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 the police. I have two complete separate services. I have two nine one one addresses, different addresses, public services, public insurance, uh, services, uh, completely insured, individual. I have two, two license permits, public services, public business, completely insured, about three hours off the way, overboard. All of all my records are fully insured, licensed. That's really all I have on that.
I'm gonna interrupt you, Matt. Chief, would you approach the council, please? I've got two questions for you. How many records are on our rotation right now? Five? Okay. I've, I've got the floor in just a minute. Now, how many of the, how to put this? We've got five on it, the new regulations that you drew up, you know, you know, that. Okay, well, that was what I was gonna ask.
Because they're on a seated rotation. We said where someone could talk more than another person. That way, whoever's on material or it's an individual, it's a variable.
I think that needed to have been done. We, we've discussed that and I think everybody's in support of, of that. Now, is there anywhere that you know of that, that, that our rotation is, have we ever had more than five on it at one time? Okay, is there anything that sets that guideline of how many that we've got that you've seen in writing?
It's actually a courtesy, it's not mandatory that we put five on them.
Okay, I just want to know, I just want to know if there's anything in writing, you know, that said it and I'm not aware of it, that's why I was asking it, okay?
You said that.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm gonna tell you where we stand on this right now. We got a call from the city attorney and he wants us to table it and we'll address it at the next meeting. He's got some things that he wants to look into further. Is that okay with you? All right, thank you for coming. Now, we're ready to approve the bill?
I move to pay the street fund payables in the amount of eight thousand, excuse me, eight thousand thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I move to pay the general fund payables in the amount of fifty-five thousand sixty dollars and fifty-eight cents.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
I move to pay the water and sewer payables in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars seventy-two cents.
Do I have a second? Second, Dennis Rutherford. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Is there anybody that thinks we're in the executive session tonight since it's on the agenda that way? I'm not aware of one. Does that mean no? Okay, um, no, no, not what, okay. Is there anybody that wants to speak on any of the items that were on the agenda tonight? Mr. D four?
I definitely think we, local, but you know, when, when attorney was gonna look into some more things, we're not saying that he's not gonna be added. So appreciate you bringing that up. We do want to support local. Anybody else want to add any more comments, add a motion?
Adjourn. Thank you, everybody.